Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Opal, please.
Legend?
Yes.
Campbell?
Here.
Dempsey?
Here.
Hill?
Here.
Croft?
Here.
Minster?
Here.
Okay, I just wanted to qualify, just say tonight that it is not due to the TV station if it comes across when I'm talking, it's gravelly. It's my voice, I've been sick, so I just want to get that out there because we've had complaints about the television stations coming up being gravelly and you can't hear anything. It just happens to be me. Tonight we have announcements, acknowledgements, communications, and reports, including our quarterly department head reports, so I don't know who wants to start.
Start with our CD queen.
Sure. First, I'm going to make one announcement, the Historic District Commission will meet on Tuesday, January 26th at 7:00 PM. In the city clerk's office, we are in the process of preparing to conduct the first of three elections held this year. The presidential primary election will be held on March 8th, the primary election will be held on August 2nd, and the general presidential election will be held on November 8th. Absentee ballots for the March 8th election will be mailed the first week in February. If you are interested in voting by absentee ballot for this or any election this year, please contact the city clerk's office. The deadline to register to vote and be eligible to vote in the March 8th election is Monday, February 8th. For anyone interested in running to fill the vacancy on the city commission, candidate packets are ready and available in the city clerk's office. A candidate must be at least 18 years old, a resident of the city for at least 365 days, and a registered voter. Candidates will file nominating petitions with no less than 40 and no more than 100 signatures. The deadline to file nominating petitions is Tuesday, April 19th at 4:00 PM. The candidate will be elected to fill this vacancy at the election held on August 2nd, 2016. We continue to accept applications for appointments to boards, committees, and commissions. Applications are available on the city's website or at the city clerk's office. Currently, there are vacancies on the following boards. Beautification Advisory Committee, Board of Zoning Appeals, Brownfield Redevelopment Authority, Harbor Commission, Historical Commission, Historic District Commission, and Traffic Safety Committee. That's all I have.
Before we move on to another department that is present tonight, I'm going to make a report for the cable network. Patrick Linnevery provided a variety of information on different productions that were taken care of by that organization, the McComb Cable Network. For 2015, there were roughly 245 productions listed, which averages in the neighborhood of about 20 per month. For example, in the last three months here, in October, there were 32 productions, including the State of the City Address, the 24th Annual Art Party, the special that they produced for Domestic Violence Awareness Month in October as well, various city commission meetings, Board of Education meetings. In November, there were 13 productions with the Santa Claus Parade also included in that mix for November. And then in December, there were nine productions. It's a little bit of a short month with the holidays and the various time off for the school system as well as other organizations. So, the last quarter, there were about 54 productions that were handled by the McComb Cable Network, which averages out to about 18 per month. So that's a general report for the McComb Cable Network. And then specifically, I wanted to talk about something as well, the mayor teased about it earlier with the gravelly voice thing. There was an issue that was reported early in December, I believe, actually late December, where there was an issue with Comcast Channel 5 in town having problems with various quality issues with the sound and/or video. There were several attempts to contact Comcast and get a service call going, and there was some confusion that intervened initially. However, they were out today in reporting that they were actively working on it, so we'd like to hear from folks if it's corrected. If it's not corrected, by the same token, we'd like to hear about it. So, that Comcast issue is being addressed. There is going to be an item on the city website that will allow you to report if you're having that kind of information or suggestions for how to make those kind of reports on those kind of issues. And the senior producer, Patrick Linnevery, suggested that you can contact him if you had issues on that front. I'm going to give out his telephone number. I think he's authorized me to do that, so we'll see if I get in trouble for this. It's 586-461-3751. So that's 461-3751. If you're experiencing any kind of quality issues on cable broadcast, on Comcast in particular, but in general, please contact him at that number. So, I'll save the next one for after we get another report from perhaps Brian Tinkley here. We'll have Community Development go next.
Well, over the last couple of months, Community Development staff has been heavily involved with the project team that is studying increased transit options along Grashit Avenue corridor from downtown Detroit to M-59. A joint meeting with the Mount Clemens Planning Commission and Clinton Township Planning Commission was held in November. Project team did present to this commission last month, and they should be wrapping up their draft plan and recommendations in the beginning part of this year and rolling that out to the public fairly soon. The master plan update process is moving forward. Downtown Plan Focus Group was held by the consulting team in September, and there was a focus group on the economic development and marketing strategy held in November, and there should be draft recommendations, again, coming very soon from LSL Planning. Staff has also been working on a public participation plan, which is a requirement of the Redevelopment Ready Communities Program, so that's something we hope to be presenting to this body in the coming weeks. For 2015 year-end inspection stats, there were 1,196 building mechanical, electrical, plumbing, and zoning permits issued, 1,714 code enforcement actions, 1,282 rental inspections and vacant property verifications, 309 rental certificates of compliance were issued, 60 new certificates of occupancy were issued, and lastly, there were 502 cuttings performed by the city's grass and weed contractor. Again, those are all 2015 year-end stats. And then the last thing is, department staff took part in training on our upgraded BSNA software. We had one week in December and one week in January, so we're, again, looking forward to utilizing that software to its fullest as we become more familiar with it. That's it.
Thank you.
Linda Kunitz from Finance.
Hi, the finance staff has been very busy this last quarter especially with the transition, new director. The city commission was presented from the Finance Department for review and approval of the 2015 fiscal year-end audit report, the Munitrack software program, and the BSNA Access MyGov Internet Service, which provides access to tax and assessing data online. With that, the Finance Department has completed all the applicable state-required reports and citizen guide. Postings were also completed and available on the city's website, leading into the Munitrack software. There's training that occurred for the 2015 dashboard and citizens guide, and Munitrack uniformly updates their system and posted hopefully in the next couple of weeks so that our link will be one link on the website that citizens will be able to click and access and information, compare data, and it's a very powerful software program for information. And then with the Internet services, there's no cost to anyone that wants to take a look at tax and assessing information. That link is going to be put on the city's website, hopefully in the next couple of weeks. It's been updated and sent to the county to post for us. The Finance Department has also updated the signature cards at all the banks, reviewed dual control process to make sure appropriate names are in place and procedures are in place as well. The check signing technology was upgraded. We spearheaded the upgrade for both tax and assessing software program and oversaw, as Brian had mentioned, the BSNA program training. Applicable employees participated in training on various days in December. There were numerous, about 15 upgraded and repurposed computers that were put into place, and the Finance Department is testing out the free Windows 10 upgrade to see if the city can take advantage of it with all the different programs we have in place, and so far, looks good, you know, avoid having to pay it down the road. So we're testing it out in our area. Computer usage and Internet access policies have been reviewed, and the city manager has updated the policy with those recommendations. Quarterly water bills were generated for each of the three billing districts. It's about 2,200 bills that go out every month, and the staff provided quality customer service with payment and any kind of questions with those bills. And lastly, there was about 6,300 winter tax bills that were mailed, and tax payments started December 1st, and taxes, to be timely on your tax payments through February 29th with the lead year.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Ms. Page, I just wanted to say that I thought it was a really great thing. I didn't get a chance to come on and comment on our last session, the tax and assessment program for BSA that makes that available to the public on the website. I think that's a wonderful thing. It's very good news on your part. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Just to flesh that out a little bit, in the past, the city had not made that available at a no-cost basis to people that were interested in properties in Mount Clemens, either residential or commercial properties. There was a per-use charge in the past, and obviously, you know, you had to make the decision to go ahead and take some money out of your pocket, to go ahead and take a look at a property in Mount Clemens to see if it was something that you were interested in investing in. This new way of approaching it for small investment on our part, I think it was $4,200, slightly over $4,200, that is the cost to the city. We make that available at no cost to people to encourage investment in the city, whether it be in a residential property, whether it be in a commercial property. So, we're going to take a look and see how that experience works out over the coming years and see how that works out, whether it stimulates additional interest and warrants that kind of investment. So, that was something that we did to be proactive and to make it easier to invest in Mount Clemens. So, I'm glad that Linda came up with that idea, and we're pleased to implement it. One more report from me before I turn it over to Jeff Wood for the DPS here. I wanted to provide information from the Sheriff Department, their statistical summary for sort of a quarter. We're still experiencing issues in terms of getting all of the information that we used to get off of their new system, the New World system. So we have information for September, October, and November as opposed to October, November, and December that was available. So I do have some statistics that were made available to me, and we've got various crime categories that are broken down into four pieces. Non-assault of property crimes, the average for those three months that I mentioned, September through November, was 264. Assault of crimes, the average for those months was 82. General service calls, which I guess would be the other category than these other three categories that are listed, were 885 for the average of those three months, and then traffic calls were 375. So for that three-month period, there was about 1,606 total interactions, service calls, crimes that were handled by the Sheriff Department and the city of Mount Clemens. Year-to-date numbers, again, not a true year because it was only through November, non-assault of property crime was 3,099, assault of crimes 901, service calls 9,660, traffic calls 4,172, for total service calls of 17,832 for the year, roughly one month short of a year. So we're hopefully, we'll have a full-year report coming from the Sheriff's Department. I did talk with Sergeant McFadden of the substation today, and he's pretty close to having that wrapped up, but there were some additional technical difficulties that kind of got in the way today. So I should have something that would be an annual report from the Sheriff Department that we'll make available once that's produced. So those are some basic statistics from the Sheriff's Department. I didn't get anything from the Fire Department, I need to follow up with them, that was on me, not them. So I'll make sure that I follow up with them and get something next time around. And then we have Jeff Wood for the DPS.
During the last few months, the DPS has installed a memorial bench in Lawndale Park. We recently, as of actually this morning, began flooding the skating ponds and the parks, and provided, if the weather stays cold, we'll continue on to a couple others. We've completed some upgrades to a couple ball diamonds at Memorial Field and have begun taking reservations for the spring season. We completed a leaf pickup program and have swept all of the streets multiple times because we've had a pretty mild winter up until now. We performed snow removal, salting, and cleanup during snow events, installed and removed the Christmas decorations, issued 2,027 parking tickets, generating approximately $105,000 in meter revenue, responded to 83 animal control complaints, supplied services to over 19,000 persons utilizing the dialerite system, met with MDOT about current and future grant funding for street repairs, completed and turned in the MDOT quarterly report for reimbursement of funds for maintenance of the state trunk line, held monthly training meetings with all DPS staff. Last month's training was on biohazards, and we have begun preparing our 2016-17 budget.
Thank you, sir.
And then for utilities, that's, I'm sorry, you have a question for Jeff?
Have we had a lot of water main breaks in the last two weeks?
I'm not exactly sure. There's been a few that I'm aware of, but it's, that's the Utilities Department that...
Yeah, we had a couple reports of a couple main breaks here. Now, we're getting reports as they occur, as far as I can tell, and I've had a few of them, yes, but nothing typical. It's been pretty unseasonably warm recently.
Well, I just wanted to extend to the crews, I saw some of them out working. It's unbearably cold. I mean, just going from my house to my garage, you know, I want to cry. So these guys that are out working in this cold weather, give them our thanks and tell them we appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Yeah, you had water to cold, and it doesn't sound like a good time, so. Utilities Department, we don't have the quarterly report from them. They are going to provide their six-month report, and that's what I'm waiting for essentially. They were close to complete but not fully complete, so I anticipate providing that probably as early as the next commission meeting. We'll cover the Fire Department and then the Utilities Department report at that time, so I apologize for the delay on those two.
Adoption of the agenda, amended agenda?
Motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Support.
Roca?
Bunton?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Dempsey?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Croft?
Yes.
Minster?
Yes.
Okay, public participation, this is the time you may address this body. All we ask is that you give us your name, residential address, and you adhere to our three-minute rule. So the mic is open.
Yes, my name is Joe E. Harrington. I live at 152 Court Street in the city of Mount Clemens and a lifelong resident. Concerning the city property that is on the corner of Court and Park Street, the city has owned this property off and on for about 30 years. The last residence that lived there, I went to school with, their last name was Stepford, and she married a Thomas. So it's been vacant for a long time, it's been dilapidated, rundown, condemned for a long time. The city has owned it more on than off. When it's off, it is sold to some unsuspecting sucker who buys it sight unseen for about $500 or $1,000. Then upon seeing it, they let it go back and fall back on to the city. To own this and to repeat this process year in and year out for about the last 30 years has, the city of Mount Clemens has been the slumlord of this particular property. I've mentioned this for the last about two years, I've mentioned it. Since then, it has been boarded up, and that cut down on the drugs and prostitution. I have, and the city have been keeping the grass cut. I also have mentioned in the past, it costs more to cut the grass on this property than it is worth. If you was to give it to me, I wouldn't take it, if you was to give it to me free. Only way I would take it is if it was tore down first. And it's time for something to be done about it. And with that being said, the property on North Brown, Grashit, and Robertson that has just been mentioned about four months ago is it, and it's not as bad as this property I'm talking about on the corner of Court and Park Street, will it have precedence, preeminence, and take cuts and go in front of the line over the property I just mentioned? Will they put Robertson and North Brown, Grashit in front of this property I've been mentioning for about two years that has been bad for about 30 years? In the past, the reply that I have got about this situation from the last two city managers is the same fast slick talk of the city has contacted the owner within court. That isn't 30 years acceptable.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening, Dolores Cusiniak, 250 Euclid. I have the same complaint again about the rubbish pickup. I think there's something on the agenda tonight that the mayor put that he's going to explain, I don't know what it is, I'm sorry, the manager. I observed them last week Wednesday, there's 10 houses on my block, and I just happened to come out there, have coffee on my porch in the morning, and I stand and I'm watching. Two, one driver, two men, one is picking up the trash, and the other one is walking down the street on his cellphone. This is a truck, he's in the middle of the street, and he's walking, and he's not picking up anything. Is he the supervisor watching this worker work, or is he checking the traffic? Or, first of all, why is he on the cellphone? 10 houses down my street, I watched him right to the end. The other person that was picking up the trash waved to me, and I waved to him. The other one on the phone looked at me like he stayed on the phone, and I went to him, I says, "Hey." Didn't bother him, just kept going. I called the city, I talked to the lady at the phone, and she says, "I already talked to them, and they're doing it again." I says, "Yes, again." She's, "Oh, I have somebody follow them." Why do we have to hire somebody or pay somebody to go out there and follow them? Now, the trash is going to be picked up tomorrow, I'm going to watch again and see what happens. This time, I'm going to take a video of it. But, you know, are we getting paid, are we paying these people to walk down the street and talk on a cellphone, and he's supposed to be working on the truck? Oh, meanwhile, he picked up a Christmas tree from across the street, so I thought, oh, well, he's going to drag the tree. He took it and he left it in the middle of the street. They're pulling away, and I hollered out, I goes, "Hey, the tree, the tree." The young kid comes out, he goes back, I say young because he's a small kid, this other man is a bigger man, he takes the tree and he throws it in the truck. So why did the first one pull the tree in the street and leave it there, didn't put it in the truck? I don't like to have a job like that. In fact, there's all junk in my snow in the front, I am not going out there and clean it up. First of all, it's frozen, it's from their trash, and I don't know who's going to clean it up, and I'm getting tired of cleaning it up. Thank you.
Thank you.
Gloria Haller, 260 CAS. I can answer part of hers. Number one, we don't know whom he was talking to on the cellphone. Number two, the Christmas tree checked me, if I'm wrong, Jeff, but I think that would be considered composting, and it's not allowed to go in with the trash. They won't take it at the landfill, so whatever. Number one, these quarterly reports, you know, our people have enough to do without these quarterly reports. If there's something going wrong in a department, something that isn't, then make the people come up, you know, if something goes wrong in the DPW, make Jeff come up here and give a report on what's wrong, what's being done to remedy it, and when the remedy is going to be complete. But this extra layer of government in here, taking their time away from doing their valuable job, so they can come in here and report. That's, you know, governmental, I won't use the word, it's silliness, and it's certainly a waste of their time. Every one of these people that are reporting have far more to do and far more important stuff to do than to put stuff together so they can, you know, meet your requirement that they do it. I don't require it. I don't think they should have to. On WWJ this week, and a couple of people called me about it, and I listened to it, they had some rotating announcements by Mickey Weiss with Mike Campbell about what's going to be happening in Mount Clemens, and we're hearing waterfront, loft developments, and marina. And I'd like to know when that came about, who's going to finance it, who's behind it, is the DDA, you know, what's going on with that. And finally, after the last meeting, and you know, I don't need this right now because with these stupid decisions that have been made here on taxes, I've had to go out and get a job in order to make sure I can pay my taxes this year, so I'm a little stressed for time, health, and money and everything else. My cellphone went off Monday night after the fourth meeting and Halla Tuesday, and I had loaded up with messages, so I started making some phone calls. And it would appear, and there are two ear eyewitnesses here tonight that I checked with, it would appear that after the last meeting, after the unsuccessful votes on the city commission issue, that in leaving City Hall, I am told that the mayor made a remark in passing to Fournier that it wasn't too late to drop out. I have a problem with two things that people do with regard to government. Number one is, don't screw with the Constitution, so I've got to get to Obama about that yet. But never, never mess with the elections process. You know, you tell her to drop out, there might be some people that are going to want to vote for her, and you're interfering in that. And what would ever possess anybody to walk up to a candidate and tell them to drop out?
Thank you, get your story straight, please. Sit down. Thank you. Anyone else?
There's witnesses here, don't try to lie your way out of it.
I don't lie.
It's okay, Bob.
Okay, you got me? I'm sorry, Rick, no, go ahead, no, please.
My name is Rick Block, I live on Cambridge, 207 Cambridge. Believe it or not, I wasn't going to say anything tonight, but sitting here listening to someone make some statements about the website and the availability of this and the availability of that, I sat here a few minutes ago, I cannot connect to the website sitting in this room. So I guess that means that if I want to reference something that's posted on the website, I need to make a copy of it and bring it so I can speak intelligently about it or ask questions about it? Is that what I'm going to have to do? I mean, if I can't access the website, why can I, why can I not access the website?
Well, let the city manager answer that for you.
You can go, I'll answer it.
That's it, I just wonder why I can't access it.
So, the city does not operate a public Wi-Fi access point, the city operates a Wi-Fi access point for the use of city employees. In the past, when people were provided a password for that, that was basically exposing our network to outside people utilizing the system. Not appropriate. The Finance Director mentioned revision of our website policies and our Wi-Fi policies, that's one of the revisions. And just to clarify for city elected officials here, city employees here, you're provided the password for a Wi-Fi network that's intended for your use as a city employee, it's not for public use.
So it can't access...
There's a difference between public use Wi-Fi, which is intended to be used by the public, which we do not operate because we don't have the system in place to operate it, and something that's intended for the use of employees. The system that we do have is for use of employees only, it's not for public use. People have been instructed on that, you're not to give out the password to people when they request it, including yourself, Mr. Block. As far as saying we're somehow blocking access to the website, I fail to follow what you're saying there. If you have a cellphone with a data package, you can access the city website. It's not something that the city's providing a Wi-Fi access point for. You use your own data to access that website or anything else that you want to access when you're in City Hall or somewhere where you need that kind of access, it's your data plan.
I didn't say that I was, that you were blocking, I just wanted to know why I couldn't access it when I'm sitting here. And my question is, if I want to reference something that's on there, I have to hope it's on there in timely fashion so I can print a copy of it and bring it and ask a question about it.
Just like any place, you're going to have to have your own data plan and/or do what you just mentioned.
Okay, just want to know what the rules are. Thank you.
It's just intended to tighten down on network access because it's not intended for public use. It's not partitioned off, it's not got a separate use point, it's got the same access point as any city employee does, which isn't appropriate to give out for public use.
Anyone else?
Michelle Weiss, 18-200, Terradry, Clinton Township. I represent the Mount Clemens...
do what you just mentioned.
Okay. Just want to know what the rules are. Thank you.
It's just intended to tighten down on network access because it's not intended for public use. It's not, it's not partitioned off. It's not got a separate use, use point. It's got the same access point as any city employee does, which isn't appropriate to, to give out for public use.
Thank you.
Michelle Weiss, 18-200, Terradry Glen Township. I represent the Mount Clemens Downtown Development Authority, and I just want to remind everyone about our ice sculpture show that's coming up on February 5th through the 7th. We will have public carving on Friday noon to six, Saturday noon to four, Sunday noon to 3:00 P.M. We'll also have an indoor children's warming center, which we will have Elsa and Friends science shows, Candy Land game, face painting, carnival games, hobby horse racing, hot chocolate, popcorn, penny candy. And this year, we've added a kids continental breakfast with Elsa and Spiderman on both Saturday and Sunday morning from 10:00 a.m. until noon. Also want to remind everyone of our chili cook-off coming up on the 4th of February, which is a fundraiser for the Anton Art Center as well as the Good Fellows. So please support both these great events and bring your families down and enjoy your downtown. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right. Administrative responses to previous meetings?
A couple of things on this commission meeting's administrative responses. Update on that blighted property at North Brown Grasshopper Robertson. As indicated previously, city administration did hold a meeting with representatives of the property owner at this corner of North Brown Grasshopper Robertson. The plans for the property are still to be determined. There was a prior evaluation of the property's condition that's reached the point that it's dated enough that they're looking to get that information re-updated and resolidified so they know what they're dealing with in terms of the condition of the property and the, and the structure on the property. After that's discussed and accomplished, we will continue to have discussions with the property owner, and we've both mutually agreed to stay in touch on the issues that this property represents so we can see what's going to happen on it in the future. Second point relates to something that was brought up by, by a resident at the commission meeting last on traffic control measures regarding a discussion of speed bumps, et cetera. Administration has had communication on these matters, and specifically in relation to the area near Shady Side Park. These communicate, these concerns have been communicated in the not-so-recent past to appropriate agencies. In other words, this has been something that's been discussed many years in the past, and these discussions have been brought to the attention of, of different agencies to see what kind of opportunities there were available to address those concerns at that time. This area and those concerns will be discussed again via Traffic Safety Committee meeting for physical control measures such as speed bumps, as well as for discussion with the sheriff on enforcement as well. So those two items would be subject to discussion at the Traffic Safety Committee meeting, which is happening in late January. The third item relates to something that was discussed just a few moments ago regarding refuse collection. The city is in regular contact with our contractor, Rizzo Environmental. The concerns mentioned at the meeting have been raised, and also commissioner mentioned the use of cans. In other words, placing cans at the curb for pickup of trash as opposed to bags. This issue has been addressed during contract expiration, solicitation, and renewal periods in the past, and can, of course, be addressed again by administration and/or the commission in the future. But currently, the policy is no garbage cans will be collected in the city of Mount Clemens.
Questions? Commissioner Mensah.
City Manager Brown, we have talked about this property on Robertson and North Brown Grasshopper. It was first on the agenda October 5th, November 2nd, December 21st, January 4th, and now on January 19th. So that's four months. I just think that this is stretching on awfully long, and I'm tired of hearing about it. We need some action. We just simply need some action. Since October 5th, this is unconscionable as far as I'm concerned. So, you know, can't we light a fire under them?
We're having those kind of discussions to let them know about the concerns. They're aware of the concerns. As I mentioned, there was a, a plan to, to reevaluate the property and then determine what their plans are from there. It's, it's a situation where the, the church is the property owner. They had the property donated to them. Contrary to what some people might have understood, they continue to pay taxes on it because it's not being utilized for church purposes currently. So they have been paying taxes on it, but that's catch 22. It's nice that we're able to collect taxes on it, but at the same time, some of their fundraising efforts go to paying the taxes as opposed to coming up with a long-term plan for the property. So they're in a bit of a situation in terms of trying to determine where they're going to go with the property, and I'm going to have a follow-up meeting with them probably next week to see what's happened with the, with the review process on the property and what, where we go from here from their standpoint. And we did talk about a variety of different things that, you know, concerns that were raised at the commission meeting and, and what could be done to address those concerns and different alternatives, so we'll see what comes out of it.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay. I need a motion to approve the minutes from previous meetings.
I move to approve the minutes from the January 4th meeting.
Support.
Okay. General business. 9A, request information of a committee to review, oh, a request formation of a committee to review the city code of ordinances. Need a motion?
Motion to form a committee to review the city code of ordinances for necessary updates and modifications.
Do I have a second?
Support.
So there was a request from Commissioners Mensah and Campbell that was attached to the, to the commission agenda item, and the following information was copied from that request. Specific action request that a committee be formed to review city code of ordinances for necessary updates and modifications, and then a set of examples was listed. Ordinance 35.270, dangerous animals. Ordinance 20.070, which had a correction to 20.060 for the marijuana ordinance. Ordinance 14.209, Section 9, McComb Place Mall, number B specifically. Ordinance 17.100, recreational equipment. And I can give some more detail on that based on what was provided in the letter if anybody has any questions, but that was the, the letter that was submitted by Commissioner Mensah and Campbell.
Okay. I, I just, I had a couple of questions, that's all. I don't have a problem forming committee if we have volunteers here to be on this committee. Is this, this is for Lisa, I guess. Is this, this will not be similar like to the charter where we have to send it down to Florida to make, this is our internal ordinances that we make?
No.
No, I'm sorry. I guess the question goes this way to the city attorney.
We contract with MuniCode.
Okay.
We pay MuniCode, I believe Lisa said approximately $3,000 a year. MuniCode provides us with updates with keeping us current. In 2004, we contracted with MuniCode to go through our entire ordinance book, recodify, recodify the same, which they did. It went through 2007, I believe. And the only thing that was not updated at that point was the zoning ordinance. And it probably was a good thing that it wasn't because the state of Michigan adopted the Zoning Enabling Act thereafter, and it would have had to be changed totally. MuniCode is a company that does this throughout the nation. Most communities subscribe to it. And what they, what they will do is they will do all of the research and look at your ordinances, and if you have an ordinance that perhaps a court case has said this provision contained in that ordinance is unconstitutional, they will modify it, give you a suggested amendment. And when we went through this in 2006, '07, we had, I'm not sure how many, but a number of Saturday meetings with the entire commission because MuniCode will also sometimes give you alternatives in terms of their recommendations. So we, we went through a rather laborious process doing that. I would, you know, you can form a committee, but MuniCode is ultimately the one that is best equipped to do this and the cheapest way to do it. And as to the specific items that are mentioned in this agenda, explanation, I can tell you the dangerous animal ordinance contains in Section 10, automatic termination slash sunset provision, states this ordinance shall automatically terminate five years from the date of adoption. The McComb Mall Place, on December the 10th, I sent to the DDA, then the city manager, a proposed amendment to that ordinance, which would delete the bicycle, the prohibition on bicycle, et cetera, et cetera. That will probably be coming before this commission shortly. As to the marijuana ordinance, we did adopt moratorium in...
November 2nd.
November 2nd for 180 days. It states in the resolution that it is for 180 days. That will expire on April the 30th of this year. It will be brought back before this commission either to extend it or to take some other action. The ordinance that is cited is just the possession of marijuana ordinance, which has nothing to do with the medical marijuana ordinance that we may at some point adopt if the state ever gets things, things together. The final item was the recreational equipment. That, that ordinance, and the agenda item does say we, requesting a discussion relative to, to perhaps allowing more time for people to have recreational vehicle in their driveways. That ordinance was amended in 2010, and the commission at that time did not want, that, that issue came up, the commission at that time was not in favor of doing that. This is a new commission. If the commission wants to do that, it's free to do so. But as to the specific ordinances that were cited, I think they, I don't know what a committee would add to this process.
Well, I, this came from, you know, when I brought up the, you know, the whole pit bull thing, and you were kind enough to point out that many pages in was the sunset clause because I, I consider myself a fairly reasonable person, and, and other people that I spoke to who I consider reasonable people, we could, we couldn't find that. So it was so far in, you know, or down in the, in the, in the codes that it was virtually impossible for a reasonable person to find it, and I, I have a problem with that. People need to be able to look at these ordinances and understand them. Government is, you know, cumbersome enough without getting confused by what's in the ordinance and what's not, what's prohibited and what's not, because we can't find where it says sunset. So I took a look at this, and just for a couple of things, and I'm glad to know that you're, you know, changing the McComb Mall thing because right now, it still states that petty, you know, petty caps.
I'm aware of that.
So, so I, so we're at cross purposes with that. I found it as an error when, and you're dealing with it, you know, afterwards.
No, it was dealt with before you brought it up. December the 10th, we had already started on it and sent it out.
Well, you didn't inform us of that, and we didn't know about it, so how was I supposed to know?
It was in your bill.
And then the marijuana moratorium, you know, if you, if you think that that ordinance covers it, that's fine.
No, that ordinance doesn't. That's a criminal ordinance relative to the possession of marijuana. That's all that ordinance has to do with. What we adopted was a moratorium on the establishment of medical marijuana facilities, which is a totally different thing.
So that wouldn't be in the code of ordinances?
No, no, not a moratorium.
Not yet.
Yeah, we could adopt one at some point in time, but as explained when we, when we did the moratorium, the state still has not finalized and come back with any real guidelines on what municipalities can and cannot do.
So you don't think it would be helpful to have that listed even though it's 100, you know, 80-day moratorium?
List where?
Somewhere. Somewhere.
People that call relative to, and the city's had a number of calls about establishing some type of growing facility or, or they contact community development, I've had attorneys contact me on behalf of clients, and we've informed them that we have a moratorium.
So you don't think that it would, it would be helpful to have that somewhere in writing in either our codes, ordinances, on a website, I mean, somewhere so that people could look that up? You would rather that they just simply call and ask?
I, there haven't been that many. I think, I think anybody that would want to establish a dispensary, normally they would contact the city as to zoning, as to all kinds of different information they'd want to re-inquire about. It doesn't go in our zoning or in our ordinances because it's not an ordinance. Now, if they, if somebody wants to put it on the website, I suppose they could, you know.
And you wouldn't put it in the zoning?
I wouldn't put it anywhere. It's a moratorium.
This is a moratorium.
It's not an ordinance.
Well, yes, and I, and I understand what the word means, but I'm just thinking, you know, some people don't want to make all those phone calls, and they would like, you know, want to look it up.
They don't want to be in business. I'm sorry. I'm sorry to interrupt. I'm sorry.
Well, you know...
Don't, is it really a major issue? I mean, have we had a lot of issue with it? Have you had phone calls or, I mean, I'm just asking. You know, I mean, if it's really not a big issue, I think we have other things that are bigger than wondering if we have a referendum, a referendum posted somewhere. That's just my opinion.
All right. So then, so then as far as the recreational equipment, you're, you're recommending that we look at that as a separate item?
Well, the, the agenda issue indicates that there is a question, a suggestion that says perhaps we would want to amend that for parking a certain number of days prior to a holiday for packing up the vehicle and after for unloading the vehicle. What I was, I'm not suggesting anything. I'm saying if it's a wish of the commission to amend the ordinance to provide for that, that's easily done.
Okay.
And that's all it would take.
Okay. So then we, then we will take your opinion on the first three, and then I'd like to have a discussion on amending the ordinance for recreational vehicles and, and being able to park them in your driveway for a couple of days before the holiday, you know, a couple of days after so that for the loading and unloading of your, you know, your food and clothing.
You can't. You can't. I mean, I, I, Brian, answer.
Yeah.
No, I'm sorry. Yes, sir.
You're recommending before and after a holiday. What if I take a, I have one of those, and I want to take a vacation, it's not a holiday, so do I get to pack my vehicle as well or no?
Well, I think that says we, you could do it, you know, with a permit. So if you were going to do it in the middle of June, you know, you could come in and get a permit maybe and do it in the middle of June.
Then what would be the difference when somebody is packing for a holiday to come and get a permit?
Can we just consult Brian to see what we currently do? That would be great. Brian?
Yeah, it doesn't specifically state in the ordinance, you know, a timeframe before or after. We generally allow people to, to do so. Most of our issues with RV parking are when people aren't able to move their RVs, you know, trailers, smaller campers into their rear yards during the offseason, which our ordinance requires. People are going to have it there for a couple of days. We generally don't even get complaints on those types of situations, so we don't really know about them, you know.
Well, this came up because I had somebody on Crest get it, get a notice who had their camper parked and got a notice to remove it from their driveway.
I thought it was above.
Yeah, we send out those types of notices quite a bit.
Mm-hmm. So...
Especially this time of year when it's the offseason and they're required to have it in a, in a rear yard.
Yeah, well, this was around the 4th of July. He was loading it, you know, cleaning it.
Yeah, it's, I'm not, I'm not saying it doesn't happen, but...
Are most of yours driven by complaint, I gather? I mean...
On this type of situation, yes, but then again, when we go out to review that complaint, you know, the code enforcement officers will check out other areas as well.
There was one time we had a conversation, just to bring it up. I remember we had a lot of issues, especially up in Seminole Hills area, with people having their campers out, and the discussion came up that possibly we should do it from, say, from May, when they start to go out, from May to the 1st of October. You just allow people to have their camper so they don't have to keep moving them around and that. As other communities do that, they give month, you know, from May when they start till October. That way, you're not dealing with this... That way you're not dealing with this, you know, constant like, you know, I have it out for a month and I, or two days and I've got to put it back and we're going back and forth. If we just do it by the month...
But the commission at that point in time rejected that idea.
Right. Well, I'm just saying it came out.
No, let me finish. The commission did not want boats, campers, RVs parked in the driveway. They only wanted them beyond the front line of the property of the house. That's where the ordinance came from.
I don't remember it that way. I thought that we allowed...
That's what the ordinance says.
I would be more than happy to look at some possible changes.
I think it's worth looking at, it sounds like, that we have some different opinions.
Do we need to approve that or do we just say, okay, Brian, can you take a look at that?
I mean, you just tell.
There's some issues with visibility when, if it's left out in the street for a long period of time or if it's left in the driveway for a long period of time, it creates an issue not on the mentioned street and campers in driveways or any street alley or whatever. You know, I've owned one, they're huge. If you leave it out in front of your house or you leave it in a driveway at the front end of the property, it creates visibility issues, it creates public safety issues. People can't see to get out of the driveway, they can't see what's coming down the road and so on and so forth. So the idea of just carte blanche, letting something go for a period of time might be attractive from some perspective, but it might be unattractive from other perspectives. And I think that's the appropriate thing for Brian to take a look at and see if there's something for us to adopt there.
I just have a question about the municipal, how often do they review or...
They review periodically, quarterly at least, and then anytime we send amendments and that. Depends on how many, how often we do amendments and that too.
Oh, okay. Because I remember when we went through that whole ordinance.
That was an additional charge, correct?
Yes.
Paid over a two-year period. Paid them all over a two-year period.
So the motion is to establish a committee.
I'll rescind it.
All right, we'll move it on. 9B, request that the city manager give quarterly reports on the charter amendment. Can we just, yeah. That's what it says. I'm reading it right. Need a motion?
Motion that the city manager give quarterly reports about what the city is accomplishing with the tax dollars gained from the charter amendment.
Sir, have a second.
Support.
So again, the request came from Commissioner Spencer and Campbell and the original request is attached to the agenda item. The following information was copied from that request. All department heads give a quarterly report about the events and happenings in the department, with many including statistics. We propose the city manager also give quarterly reports about what the city is accomplishing with the tax dollars gained from the charter amendment. We need to show our residents that something tangible has come from this tax increase. Items to be covered should include what equipment we purchased, what positions were filled, what capital improvements have been made and what need to be made, where we are with bond payments and the payment or pay down of our debts, what are the increases in city services and what city services haven't maintained because of the charter amendment. These would be separate items from the regular city manager's report.
So I'm asking for this because I have heard innumerable times from residents that they don't know what we're doing with their money after we raise their taxes. I think this would answer that question.
Anyone else?
I can say that I've, many people have said, what are we getting for our money? I thought this would just be a way of allowing them to understand what has taken place.
Well, I think once we start collecting it, which is now, if I'm not mistaken, we're just starting to collect it. So we haven't done anything in terms of their money. And second of all, I think when we, the charter went through, I thought it was, and I could be wrong, basically to keep the city functioning, there wasn't anything new in there that we were going to purchase or hire or anything like that. So, I mean, I think it's a good idea to maybe give an update down the road, but I don't think there was anything ever listed that we were going to do this, this, and this, other than to keep the finances and keep the city functioning because we were in such dire need at that time and we were depleting our fund balance, so.
We did agree to purchase a high rager and I understand that that might not be something that, you know, we need at this point, but we also agreed with part of that money to fund the economic development position.
Commissioner Barton?
I guess, first of all, we're about to go into a budgeting session in the next few weeks and that will determine what we do with the money. The money, the whole millage thing, the whole increase was to keep the city from going under, okay? And if we allow the city to go under, talk to the people in Flint. Ask them about how good it is to have an emergency city manager to come in and take over your property, poison your water, let you drink bad water, et cetera. They don't care what they do. They just want to make balance. Once they got that balance, they go home to their nice community and leave you with whatever's left. Now, that was the whole point of this millage increase. I know that, I'm not happy with the increase. I mean, I have taxes to pay just like everybody else, but I did not want to see the city go under and I don't want us to jump into a spending spree just because we are working toward not going beyond our fund balance. Our fund balance was that money that we had set aside and each year we had to cut a big piece out of it and then another big piece out of it, then another big piece out of it. We're getting to the point where we would have cut it down to zero. Once we cut it to zero, then the emergency financial managers come in and they cut until they get it to the right spot. We have had people come in and tell us that we've done everything we could possibly do. We've collected all of the low hanging fruit is the terminology they use, but we've done all that we can do. The only way to keep the city alive was to have this millage increase, okay? So this report thing is another opportunity to have people sit down and do needless statistical analysis when it really comes down to a budgetary situation. When we sit down, do the budget, we make a presentation, a report to the city, to everybody that wants to know what we're doing with the money, where the money's going, how it's being spent. I don't see a need for a committee to do this or for us to get into another statistical game. Okay, I'm through.
There's nothing in here about a committee doing it. There's nothing in here about spending any of the money. There's just a request to let the community know where the money was spent.
Okay, there is no money that was spent. We haven't even got the money yet. So, I mean, how could we do that when the money hasn't even arrived yet? So, you know, I guess I have a problem with that. And I think Ron was supposed to be next and I just answered your statement because you've spoken before Ron, but go ahead, Ron.
Decor him here. Decor. Commissioner Campbell.
I mean, I understand and agree with everything that Commissioner Barton has said. My take on it was just not this long drawn out report, just simply giving the residents a few things as to where the money was spent that has helped save the city. Not a big, long, drawn out report, not, it's simple and to the point. That's all. Not a big, long report. That's how I take it. That's the reason, that's the only thing I wanted. So I'm voting yes on it. If you want to vote no, that's fine and let's move on.
I think I took it similar to Mr. Campbell. I don't think it was, there was any ill intention behind it and I also believe that, you know, there's nothing wrong with, you know, doing as much as we can in terms of telling people how their money is being spent, you know. I think every opportunity that we can say and we can champion, hey, we are in better shape and we are doing this and we can be positive, I think that we need to make sure that that way we can say to our residents that we know exactly how it's being done. I don't think that anybody is saying we're going to do this instead of the budgetary process. I don't, I don't think anyone's trying to, you know, take over the city here by these reports, so.
Commissioner Barton?
Again, that information is always presented when we do the budget. So anybody that's interested in knowing, you know, where we spend our money, how the money goes, where it goes, it's all going to be presented when we do the budget.
I can totally understand that and when I would teach my students chemistry, I would present something once and then I would have to present it again. And sometimes I had to present it another way, another time, so that I understood for so many people because I had so many different ways of people learning. So I don't think it's a bad thing.
As a redirecting, I taught school for 35 years as well, okay? I have had an experience in teaching. And so we teach what's necessary when it's necessary. We don't do things when it's not necessary and this is a not necessary situation. You don't need to present to the people these details when they haven't been worked out in our budget. When we work the budget out, we explain it, we present it to everybody and when everybody understands the budget, if they have any questions whatsoever, there are seven of us or eight of us, actually nine of us around that you can come and talk to, anytime you want to. Nobody has ever closed the door on anybody that's coming to ask a question about the budget, where the money is going, how it was spent, how much it was, whatever. We've not had that situation. So to come up with this quarterly report thing where we're requesting people to do additional work beyond what they already are doing and the budget process is a grueling, long-term situation and it's not fun. And to have to have, you know, these reports generated beyond that, that's just, it's wasted energy. I'm sorry, but I guess we probably should just go ahead and vote because I see it's going to go three and three.
Okay, well, I have two different things I'd like to add to this discussion. One is that the biggest chunk of the money was to go and pay our deficit on paying retirement pensions. And that was what was consuming a lot of our rainy day fund that we kept pulling. So that's really the major item. Anyway, the other thing that I'd like to say is that I don't think it's necessary to do quarterly reports. I do think it's nice to let the public know and perhaps that could be articles in the newsletter that goes out to everybody because not everybody watches the city commission meeting, but everybody gets the newsletter in the mail.
I like that idea because that reaches everybody. I think that's a good...
Well, and I appreciate that, the newsletter does come out quarterly.
But I don't know that it's necessary to report on it every single quarter. I think a couple of times a year or whatever. I mean, I do think that people want to know what the money's being spent for and, let's face it, we've all made some sacrifices in paying increased taxes. So people, you know, rightly want to know how it's being used, but I don't think it's necessary to make the city manager give a quarterly report on it.
So you want to amend my motion?
No, I just want to forget it.
Yeah, that's a suggestion I could make. I mean, I hear what you're saying. You want to get a report on what's been done with the charter amendment. The idea of having a column maybe twice a year in the clementines, I think is a good alternative. If you're okay with that, I mean, I can just take the general consensus that that's what we want to see happen and I don't think we need a motion. That's up to you if you want to have a motion, but I hear what you're saying and if you're okay with that kind of an approach in the clementines, I think that's a good idea. Maybe a couple of times a year to talk about, so far this is what's been spent in terms of capital investments, this is what's been spent in terms of makeup contributions on retirement funding that we had short funded in the past, those kind of things. I think that's great and I'm happy to do that.
Maybe it should be seen just as a budget update.
Update, I agree.
Not specifically for...
That's why I kind of rephrased it.
The additional income, maybe just a budget, you know, you present the budget and then do a budget update on how's it going and...
Fees on major capital investments and so on.
Right. To me that, I mean, I don't know.
Does that work?
I can live with that.
Okay, so do we want to take a motion, I mean, take a vote on this motion?
No, if you're going to put this out at least twice a year and it's going to be available for the public, I'll rescind the motion.
Okay. 9C, approve page, approve purchase and payments of invoices.
Move to approve purchase and payments of invoices.
Support.
As presented.
Are there any questions on any? Seeing on Roca, please.
Campbell?
Yes.
Dempsey?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Krab?
Yes.
Spencer?
Yes.
Barton?
Yes.
Okay, 9D, appointments to boards, committees, and commissions. Need a motion?
I move to approve appointments as presented.
Do I have a second? Okay.
I'm just looking for some continuity. In September, we had a large list of appointments like this and we got applications for them. We got an application, you know, the commission got copies. We got a copy of Michael Schichtels for the cable TV. We got a copy of Mary Beth Grant for the historical commission and Glenn Voorhees for the board of review. Tracy Mitchell, same thing, and Patricia Marshall for the retirement committee. I really appreciate the residents applying for these boards and, you know, spending time for the betterment of the city on these boards. I just, some of these people, you know, are not well-known. Some of them we know very well. I would just like to see if we're, and I'm not trying to impede your appointment ability, I would like to have information on the residents and maybe why they want to, you know, join these committees. It's been provided in the past, I'd like to see...
These are all reappointments. These are not new appointments. These are all reappointments and the applications are in the city clerk's office and she'll be more than, you know, call her up and she can pull them for you. But these are reappointments. Some of these people have been on a long time. Why they want to continue is not written down anywhere other than they are still interested in continuing on these boards when I contact them.
And so you don't, you're...
There's no new applications.
No new applications.
No. These people have served, many of them have served many years on these boards. They enjoy serving on the boards. They don't get any compensation for serving on these boards and I've had no issues or complaints about these people, so...
I didn't say anything.
No, I'm just saying, that might trigger not appointing somebody if there has been issues, absentees at the meetings or whatever. That may trigger to get a new, you know, to appoint someone new. But if they've been on the boards, they've been serving and everything is fine, it's just a reappointment. So there's no new applications.
So then will we get copies of applications for new appointees?
New appointees when they're coming on. We'll have some more coming on because there's some expiring at the end of this month and so I will make new appointees and those new ones you will have applications for. But any reappointments, if somebody doesn't know anybody on here, contact the city clerk's office and she'll be more than happy to pull their old file out.
Or go to the meeting and introduce yourself.
Yes, yes, do attend these meetings and introduce yourself. That'd be great.
Okay, I'm good.
Okay. Roca, please.
Dempsey?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Krab?
Yes.
Spencer?
Yes.
Barton?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Okay, the rest of the consent agenda?
I move to approve the remaining part of the consent agenda.
Support.
Roca?
Hill?
Yes.
Krab?
Yes.
Spencer?
Yes.
Barton?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Dempsey?
Yes.
City managers report?
So several items for this report. There's an update on the 35 South Rosebeck property. This is the exciting new rental complex development that was recently experiencing a change in ownership. Representatives of the new ownership have been in close contact with the city's community development department and a lot of wrap-up activity has taken place on the property. We expect all remaining issues will be handled in the near future and a full certificate of occupancy would follow as would residents occupying the units, which would be a good exciting development from town. Second, update on redevelopment-ready community certification, the RRC certification program. City recently did commit to achieving RRC certification. This program slash certification is now a process of the Michigan Economic Development Corporation or the MEDC. The intent of this process is for participating communities to make themselves more attractive for investment and development by evaluating and updating their development processes to be more deliberate, more fair, and more consistent. The city administration is committed to pursuing and improving our processes to attract both reinvestment by existing businesses and for new investment. MEDC recently delivered a presentation to the commission and the commission in turn passed a resolution of commitment to the RRC process. Preceding that activity, the city had proactively included specific requirements of the RRC process such as a downtown development plan, a public participation plan, and our master plan update process, which is ongoing. We've also submitted our process summaries in order for the MEDC to complete a preliminary evaluation of city processes. And then this is sort of the explanation part of this. As you may know, the MEDC was recently heavily impacted by a reprioritization process within state government and this had a big impact on the staffing and process... had a big impact on the staffing and processes associated with the RRC program. City administration remains committed to achieving RRC certification, and we await MEDC feedback on those next steps following the evaluation. And then, the last point, sheriff department cooperation. City administration's been working with the substation sergeant, Tim McFadden, on revisiting our cost recovery ordinance. This ordinance has been established to address issues of individual locations becoming excessive consumers of public safety resources, that is to say, repetitious calls for service to a single location that become problematic and take too much resources from our, our fire department or from our police department. We have met and discussed this issue several times with the sergeant, and we've prepared new processes and procedures to help us enforce the provisions of this ordinance as is necessary, so you could be seeing some action on that in the future. And that's the last item that I had for the city manager's report today.
Question? Comments?
I do have one question. Those apartments at 35 South Grossbeck, is there any income requirement for those?
No.
Okay. Somebody asked me if that was low-income housing, and I said I didn't think so, but I'll check.
Not at all.
Okay, thank you.
Not at all. Very excited about the new company that's there, they've been very cooperative and doing a lot of good work in terms of finalizing things that had been an issue, so we're pleased and looking forward to it opening.
Great. Commissioner Mensah?
Has the access issue on those for the fire department been solved?
Yeah, that's one of the things that was exciting, was an added level of cooperation with an issue that was raised there. The access points off of Logan are going to be greatly improved to allow pretty, very much easy access for the fire department into the property, as well as out of the property. The Grossbeck situation is going to remain as is, there's also an alternative there for entrance and exit onto and off of the property, but the primary access point's going to be off of Logan, and if you take a look, once that's completed, I think you'll be pleased with that, and I think the fire department is going to be pleased with it as well.
All righty, Commissioner comments. Commissioner Bunton?
Hope everybody is enjoying the spring of winter that we've suddenly got. If you were one of those winter guys, well, this is your time. We don't have the snow yet, but I hear it's coming, so those of you who enjoy that, it's there. I'd like to just make you aware of the Michigan State University Extension, that they're presenting Cooking Matters, and this is so that you can create nutritious, wallet-friendly meals, selecting nutritious foods, preparing healthy foods, choosing budget-friendly ingredients that are necessary to prepare healthy meals for their families. This will be taking place starting February 24th, and will run six weeks, 24th, March 2nd, March 9th, March 16th, March 23rd, March 30th. This will be held at the Verqueun Building, 21885 Dunham Road, and that will be in room A. I know this is an advanced information for you, I think it will be posted on the city's program, TV program, and you can just look that up and make yourself aware of it, because I think that's a very good thing, and since it is so far in advance, I will also try to repeat that several times between that time and now. And if you know people who can take advantage of, and you'd like to do it yourself, it runs from 1:00 to 3:00 on Wednesdays, these are Wednesday dates. I hope everybody not only just took a day off yesterday, but took time to reflect on Martin Luther, Martin Luther, okay, Martin Luther King Day, okay? So that you remember the sacrifices he's made, the things that he's done to accomplish the things that we enjoy today, especially as African-American, black people, people of color. The, the celebration of his, his day, his birthday kind of commemorates the fact that he struggled and died, so that we can have freedom, all of us. I guess I just want to comment on something that was mentioned last week about us visiting the neighborhoods and, and having a person from a neighborhood to be representative of that neighborhood. So, what I want to say is this, I, I visit the neighborhoods, I ride around the neighborhoods, I walk sometimes in the neighborhoods, and, you know, I get a chance to interact with people. But, that's not the same thing as having a representative of the city commission that lives around the corner from you, that you can run around the corner and say, hey, I had this problem, or would you look into this for me? So, you know, it's, we are overwhelmed in our representation in a certain section of the city, but not on the other side of the city. I know we don't have a ward system, I know that we don't try to balance the city out, but, I mean, it would be really just nice to have a representative from an area of the city that has a large degree of problems, that would be represented and have an opportunity for people to go next door, go around the corner, see a friend walking, and say, hey, come here, I got to talk to you about a problem I have. So, Ron does an awful lot of walking through the neighborhoods, and riding through the neighborhoods, and visiting people in the neighborhoods, and I, you know, I definitely commend him for that, he's younger than I am, and I couldn't do it if I was as young as he was, or he is. So, but, you know, I think, I just want to put that out there, just because, it was said last meeting, and I thought about it, I'm not condemning anybody that doesn't, don't live in a particular neighborhood, I think we all represent the whole city, and, and I do, and I know that to be true, and I know that many of the rest of us, all of the rest of us do. And with that, let's move on to commission wisdom for 2016. I'm going to give you two. One, if you start a task with fear and doubt, you are doomed to fail, both within and without. That one is an original. I don't know where it came from, out of my head. And the other one from Martin Luther King. We must learn to live together as brothers, or perish together as fools. And with that, we'll say good night.
Thank you. Commissioner Mensah?
So, the Defense Department announced that the 12 A-10 Warthog attack and support planes flying out of Selvern Air Force Base will remain there at least through 2017's Defense Department budget. These planes have been critical in the fight against ISIS or the Islamic State. This is good news for our neighbors, Harrison Township, but it's also good news for us. The base's military personnel, families, and employees do have an economic impact on our city, so we're happy to hear this. I'd like to congratulate John Switla. He is the county's public information officer, he was just named a lifetime honorary member by the Detroit Sports Broadcasters Association. This is the highest individual membership honor for the association. John is a lifelong Mount Clemens resident, he is a graduate of St. Mary's, and he was also a broadcaster for the Mount Clemens racetrack. I don't know if Mr. Ford remembers him. And I'd also like to congratulate Bakes and Crop. They have been nominated for Startup of the Year for the Macomb County Small Business Awards on February 9th, and that's my comments tonight.
Thank you. Commissioner Krab?
I would like to thank everyone for coming to my monthly Commissioner Coffee Talks, and I just wanted to announce that I'll have two in February, February 9th, February 20th, both at 9:30 in the morning. February 9th is a Tuesday, February 20th is a Saturday, so hopefully, if you can't make it Tuesday morning, that the 20th would accommodate your schedule. Both will be, sorry, the 9th will be at John's Family Grill, and on the 20th, I'm going to try to move to a different section of the city, and so I'll let you know before the 20th when, where that's going to be. I would also like to extend the offer to anyone that is going to think about running in August or in November. If you're feeling daunted, you know, overwhelmed by the process, I would more than happy to sit down with you and chat about what it means, how to start the process, collect petitions, all that kind of stuff. So, my email address is on the city's website, and feel free to email me, or call the city manager's office and leave me a message, and I'll be happy to call you back and sit down with me to talk about that. Mr. Bun, Commissioner Bunton mentioned the Michigan State Extension Center's free class, The Cooking Matters. They're also going to be providing free transportation through the smart system, so if you give them a call, and when you register, they can provide you some transportation. I also received some additional complaints about Rizzo after the meeting, so I just wanted to kind of throw that out there, that I did receive some complaints by people, actually, it was immediately after the meeting, you know, the next morning, so I don't, I think they were, didn't hear it from here. St. Clair Shores is collecting water for the residents of Flint. I think that that's something that's obviously an atrocity, we should, it's ridiculous that it happened, and we could all go into the ins and outs of that, but I think that we should all, as human beings, do something to help that situation. I know I will be donating to St. Clair Shores Department, the fire department and their city hall is, they have an organized donation site, so you can go donate any kind of bottled water, jugs of water that you can, and they will deliver them to charities within Flint. So, again, if you can't make it to St. Clair Shores, feel free to leave me a message at Mr. Brown's office, and I will happily collect the water and send it over to St. Clair Shores for you. I would like to thank the sheriff's department, because two weeks ago, my, I was woke up, woken up at 1:00 in the morning by our cellphone going off, that we had an alarm situation, a burglary situation at our, at our facility, our woodworking facility on South Rose Street. It was amazing how quickly they were there. We had three sheriff's cars there, my husband went and took care of it, because we have two little guys, and I stayed home, but my husband said they were fantastic, professional, wonderful to deal with, and so, I just want to thank them for, it was a false alarm, by the way, too. So, thankfully, it was just the wind, or a spider, I think. So, so thankfully, it all is well, but thank you to them for their quick response, and they really did a nice job. I have a question about the Wi-Fi access. I think that we need to maybe reevaluate that program, that there are many, even Panera and Starbucks offer free Wi-Fi service, and I don't think that it would, I think there's a way to do that without exposing our system, and maybe we need to take a look at that. And I really encourage everyone to come and check out the ice carving and the chili contest, that's always a fun event for families. You can check out the Bakes and Crop statue that we're going to, the ice carving that we're going to have, and I think that the chili contest is really, pardon the pun, heating up. It sounds like Orleans and Three Blind Mice are ready to really duel, so it's exciting, and come down and support the downtown businesses there. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Hill?
I would like to thank the department heads for their reports. I don't know whether they're unnecessary work for them or not, but I think it's nice for people to see who the department heads are and, and hear from them once in a while. And I always learn something from the reports myself. I know many of us have been following the Flint water crisis, and I agree with what Commissioner Bunton said about the emergency manager situation. I feel extremely grateful that our village passed. I know that it's a sacrifice for some people, but I sure would not like an emergency manager to come in and do in Mount Clemens what has happened in Flint. And I am grateful every day for our good water supply here in Mount Clemens. Last Monday, January 11th, the retirement board met, and it's an interesting group, we always hear all about our investments. The city has substantial investments which bring in income that we use to pay the retirement for our retirees. The city has over $58 million, that's what it's worth right now, and, and they're doing very well. Our investments are handled very well by Luma Sales, and he comes and gives us frequent reports about what's going on. Since, since the, the bottom fell out of the stock market a few years ago, the stock situation has improved greatly, and our retirement fund is now 99.2% funded. That means that that money doesn't need to come out of the general fund. When this, when the bottom fell out of the stock market, we did have to take large sums of money out of the general fund to pay our retiree commitments, but now, our stocks, our investments are doing very well. We have 186 retirees that we are paying pensions for in the city, that is about, I think about triple the number of employees that we have.
68 employees?
So, you can see that that is a huge financial commitment that the city has to pay the retirement and healthcare for all of these people. And then, lastly, I'd like to say that, as you have probably noticed, the city commission does not always agree on everything, but I am happy to say that when the city commissioners were asked to pay for an ad to go in this program for the Martin Luther King banquet that was sponsored by the Interfaith Center for Racial Justice, every single one of us chipped in, and it's on, if you have one of these, it's on page 109. And the price went up this year, so we only did a half-page ad, but this is our ad. And in closing, I would like to read the quote that we put in. Returning violence for violence multiplies violence, adding deeper darkness to a night already devoid of stars. Darkness cannot drive out darkness, only light can do that. Hate cannot drive out hate, only love can do that. And that is a quote from Martin Luther King. So, with that, I will say, have a good evening and a great week.
Thank you. Commissioner Campbell?
Yeah, I just have one thing regarding the gentleman about the house on Park and Court Street. It was painful listening to how long this situation has gone on. I would hope that he and the city manager can meet to work out some kind of a solution on the issue that he had addressed here tonight, and that's all I have tonight, thank you.
Okay. Well, since we have an exec meeting scheduled, I will save my comments for next week in my report, and I will take a motion to take a five-minute recess, and we have, oh, five-minute recess, and then we have an exec session. So, I need to vote, I need a motion to vote, to go into exec session.
Somebody make a motion.
Still moved?
Yeah, thank you. Second, okay, Roca.
Krab?
Krab?
Yes.
Mensah?
Yes.
Bunton?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Dempsey?
Yes.
Hill?
Now, five-minute recess. Okay, need a motion to adjourn?
Still moved.
All votes in favor, say aye.
Aye. Need adjourned.